All right, we're back in our, back in open session. We'll begin with item five, Alpha, which is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments this evening?
Mayor Jerry Brown, address thirteen ninety, state road app. I have two items I'd like to address the council in I R. The first one is-
Can you use the mic, the mic so we can-
I can speak loud enough, the people will hear.
No, we need the online.
I can speak loud enough, thank you.
Can you, we need-
The city Wainsville webpage, I went to get-
All right, just a minute. I run the meeting, please use the mic so the online guest could hear you. Can you use the on-
Sir, I can speak loud enough, the people will hear.
The online people need to hear you.
They are hearing very fine.
How do you know that?
I'm going ahead, okay?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The city Wainsville webpage, I went to get information on the minutes for the last city council meeting, for the last several months. The last meeting showed on there was October twenty-third of twenty-three. There has been no city council minutes on the webpage since the twenty-third, by the October twenty-third of last year. I would, I followed their prompts, I went to the city government, I went to council meetings and minutes, I went to meetings. Where are the meetings? Out of confinement, it's not being very transparent, meetings don't on the webpage. The second, it also says, please be advised that minutes were not posted until after they have been approved. It's taking this long to get these minutes approved. The second I'd like to address is Bill twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, both ordinance, but particularly, and the council will have their agenda there, page twenty-two, on the Agenda Pack Exhibit A, Section D. This appears to infringe upon First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. Ordinance like this are chipping away on this important right. When is this conduct going to stop, an elective important point, the city officer's duty? It's sad to see that anyone who worked for the city has to give up the First Amendment right. I feel that each member of the city council should examine this part very closely. It is tampering with rights of free speech. I would also like to point out that each member of the city council took an oath to the Constitution of the United States, and one of the first things on there, freedom of speech, probably the one.
We'll address both of those questions separately. The first, well, the second question, exactly what violation are you referring to?
The council has to decide that, not me.
You said that we-
Read section, read section D.
I already did. I want to know, what is your complaint?
What I just told you.
You said, but how, how is it infringing on free speech?
Read it, sir, read it and understand the Constitution.
I'm asking you-
No, because I'm voting on it. I'm just bringing this to your attention.
Mr. Brown, is not, you're not being clear.
I'm being very, very clear. I said this is possibly infringing on the First Amendment right made out of the United States Constitution.
So I asked the question, how?
You read it and understand it. You took an oath, part of it, took an oath to the Constitution.
The way I read it, it does not.
Well, that's what you and the council can decide.
Well, you just asked me to do that.
That's right. Now you keep asking me, what am I going to do?
No, I'm not asking you what you're going to do, I'm asking you, you said that it's a violation of free speech. I'm asking you, can you explain to the council, how is that a violation of free speech?
The council has to read that importantly especially, and then you have to make that decision.
Okay. Can, can we have Nathan, is Nathan?
He is.
Can you please address that, that comment?
Sure. Let me just say that I think when the mayor said that it's infringing on free speech is probably the most accurate. So, all employees obviously have the right to free speech. On the other hand, cities like any other government have the ability to regulate the conduct of their employees, both at work and to some extent afterward. So what the courts have said on this issue is that they draw a line. It depends on what the nature of the speech is. And if the speech is on a matter of what they consider to be public import, so for instance, if employee is, is bringing attention to the fact that there's a development going on in the city, or bringing to the fact that the city has some critical need that's not being addressed, that's protected speech. You can say that. On the other hand, speech that's just more of a personal nature, like, I don't like my boss, is not protected speech, and the city can prevent a dissonance for that, and that's what the case is saying. And that's conduct not only that occurs at work, but also conduct that occurs afterwards. As I was saying before, some of the cases on this actually came out of police officers, firefighters posing in the nude, which is not conduct that occurred obviously at work. Clearly posing in the nude is protected free speech, but the courts, they look at something that is not a public import, and it is something that does affect their, their, their job and the city's ability to do what it needs to do. And so cities can't regulate for that, for that. So when I look at this particular section, I can see why it might be concerning, but I, I think it is within the grounds that a court would uphold, because it, it only, only impacts that kind of speech that is of a personal nature, without preventing employees from speaking on things that are more of a community nature.
All right, who to decide that it's personal and community?
Well, so who decides? You know, first of all, if something like this came up, and the employee had said something, I would expect that the HR people at the city would contact me and say, what's your opinion? And I would, based on my experience and knowledge of the existing cases, would try to draw that line in that particular case, for that many, many, many times. Also, I noticed a unique thought, that he admitted discipline for something that is protected by free speech. He has access to the courts if he can file a lawsuit and ask a judge, and the judge will quickly determine what is free speech protected, what is not free speech and not protected.
Well, I'm asking the council, look at that ordinance through the council. You have on the basis of the United States Constitution.
The first question, we can get answered now as well. Do you want to answer it?
I have to answer it, I'm a senior.
Okay. Did we have information on the, on the website?
All the minutes are in the packets of the council meeting. I just haven't moved them under the actual minutes list yet, but every minute from the beginning of the year is listed in the packets on the packet, on the Agenda Pack.
So it's listed on the Agenda page in the package?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go back and explain something. I look at your webpage. I went to the action place that the person shouldn't find that. It strictly says, please be advised that minutes not posted until after they have been approved, on that site. Not somewhere else hidden tucked away somewhere, and nobody else will find, except somebody's role code, the program. It states right on the webpage.
Okay, you're right.
That's right, that's why I found Brandy Pfeiffer. Why argue with him?
Nope, we're not arguing, we're just trying to clarify. I need a snickers. All right. So, are there any other citizens' comments? All right, we do have two appointments from some citizens that want to be a part of the city and part of the solution. And I will tell you, first of all, before we do these appointments, I sent out a request for citizens that want to be a part of the planning and zoning or the park board. We had two slots that were open on the park board, and I received twelve applications. And that says a lot about our community, that we have people that actually want to help and be a part of the, the solution to the problems that we have here as far as communication and making a better, better community for our citizens. With that being said, in the previous month, we had Ms. Brandy Pfeiffer, she was assigned to the planning and zoning, but we have now, we're going to move her to the park board, as well as Mr. Kevin Daly. I'm going to ask the council, have you had opportunity to look at the resumes and the bios from those?
Yes.
Those citizens?
Yes.
All right. So the first person, I will need a motion to appoint Brandy Pfeiffer for the Wainsville Park Board.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Hayden, second by Mr. Hyatt, discussion. Madam Clerk, call the road.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Hicks.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills.
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Hayden.
Yes.
Councilman Blant.
Yes.
Councilman Corrin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, we had another outstanding candidate, Mr. Kevin Daly. You hear Kevin?
Yeah.
All right, so Kevin was able to make it out tonight. Really appreciate all of his expertise and experience that he, he wants to bring to the team. I will entertain a motion for Mr. Daly as well. Motion by Mr. Rice.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Corrin, discussion. Madam Clerk, call the road.
Councilwoman Corrin.
Yes.
Councilman Blant.
Yes.
Councilman Hayden.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Dills.
Yes.
Councilman Hicks.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
And this is just purely information for the council. We did have a slot open for planning and zoning. I do have a candidate, but he's going to be out of the, the country, or out of the area for the next two months, so I thought it was appropriate to wait until he returns before I present his packet before you. So we will have that seat fixed as well, or filled. And how he found out about it, he actually came to one of our orientation briefs from the city when we was teaching about local government and how things operate, and so he wanted to be a part of it. Both he and his wife submitted applications, so they are on our, on mail for that. I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Doe for the city administration report.
Yeah, clock's right twice a day, Bill.
Okay, there we go. So, yeah, want to speak briefly to also discussion about dissemination of the minutes, or the minutes are, if you do attend, there are minutes provided each month at the council meeting, hard copy within the packet every month on the table. And again, we will get that corrected as we, as we update. So we're going to start off, got a lot of ground to cover. Wainsville Park Board, Kids to Park Day, June first, Walde Hills. If you haven't been, go this weekend, don't want to miss it. And again, appointment of Brandy Pfeiffer, as well as Kevin Daly. And we really appreciate the volunteers and their, the excitement hopefully that they will bring to that board and the vision they will bring as well. Moving forward to the utility committee, that was held the sixth. Appointment of committee chair was Robert Rice, congratulations. Utility committee went through department updates with water, sewer, electric, and natural gas, all giving updates of work completed through this previous month. Discussion of our existing back truck, the two thousand one International Back Truck, had a proposal for a sale of the vehicle to the city of Dixon. Committee approved forwarding this proposal to the Finance and Human Resources for review and approval. We also, this is a piece of equipment, as we discussed in those committee meetings, that is widely used within the city, is used by all utilities daily, probably the most used piece of equipment that we own. So without having a replacement, absolutely wouldn't get rid of it. We did kind of procure a replacement. We was looking for a, a back truck for a couple years now. We found a twenty fifteen back truck, same, same supplier, actually came across this vehicle. This co-equipment is the supplier of the previous truck, or the truck that we have now, the two thousand one International Back Truck, and contacted the city and notified us, maybe two, three months ago, that they were in possession of this vehicle. Both proposals were forwarded to Finance and Human Resources for review and approval. Next, next meeting is scheduled for June third at three thirty, City Hall. Brings us to Economic Development Committee. Appointment of the committee chair was Councilman Bill Farnum. This month's business spotlight was every blooming thing. Discuss the Walde Hills, this was actually a picture that I had taken as the wall was in transit or coming to, there was, to the Wainsville City Park. There was escort provided by our police department. Mr. Hazel did a fine job bringing that through parts of, most likely Miller, maybe Osage, definitely Blaskey. They, they did a really good job bringing that in, and, and really impressed me as well as made the city look very good through this process. The Wall that Hills is, is up, it is in the park, it is a twenty-four seven operation, you can go at any time. It is manned all day and night. These are a few pictures of the wall. If you've not had an opportunity, I encourage you to go personally, I also encourage you to take your family to view this. This morning, we had opening ceremonies, I will say Mayor Wilson done a fantastic job, but not quite as good as his wife. Okay? If she was there, you know what I'm talking about. She, she was singing the National Anthem, done a great job, very proud to be a part of that ceremony personally. We had guest speakers, Dr. Richard Elgin was, was a guest speaker. We had Rick Morris, and we also had Major General Christopher Beck, correct? And picture of them, and they, they all did really well. Tough act to follow is what I would say. Very, very pleased that I was able to, to attend and watch the opening ceremonies. I, I want to kind of stop just a second and really thank the, thank the city staff for the amount of work that it has taken to get this to be a part of our community, because this is, this is something that, you know, I, I seen this wall when I was probably in second grade in Dixon, and to my knowledge, it's never been even close to this area again. And to bring it here and to have it displayed in, in the city of Wainsville, I, it's, it's an honor to be a host city of the wall, but it's more of an honor to be a host city of the wall with the staff that we have coordinating these events. And it went seamlessly, as you guys well know, the weather this morning wasn't cooperating. Mother Nature wasn't invited to opening ceremonies, but she showed up anyway. And Doug just seamlessly made an audible to say, you know, we don't want our speakers to be disgruntled. And at six o'clock this morning, we were moving opening ceremonies from the field to a covered pavilion, and it was perfect. And it's nice to show up and see that. And as responsibilities there pick up, maybe, maybe in the City Hall, some of those responsibilities slack off, but I've got a staff here that just picked them up, and you don't even notice that this thing has ran seamlessly. The workload has been distributed very nicely, and just want to thank the city workers and, and my staff for making this a success. Also, on economic development, we discussed the Dollar Tree, and that the city has received a set of plans and permits for a Dollar Tree to be located in Townsville Plaza. And another discussion topic that we had was basically a community spotlight in USA Today. We will be in the Memorial Day edition of the newspaper. This is national recognition of our city, and I, I think that, again, this is really advertising our city, not only locally or regionally, this is nationally, and they've done a very good job with, with this, and I encourage people to go out and get that edition and read about their community. The next economic development meeting is scheduled for June third at five o'clock. Roads and Grounds, appointment of committee chair, Don Hayden. So we got a new guy to jump in there, and very proud of him for standing up, yeah, he, he got it, and way to go. So excited about that, I've been working with Don a lot over the past month with, he, he has a lot of questions, and they're very good questions, and I appreciate that, I truly do. Roads and Grounds update, department updates were really focused around and revolved around storm cleanup and that effort and that process, and it's still not complete, we still have addresses calling in and some, some brush to pick up. And then we had a lot of material hauling, gravel and things for the road and improvements up at the summit, really completing the S I P. We discussed parking requirements for Pinnacle Place, Sierra Circle, and Switchback Road, and what those parking requirements will look like, and this is actually the second time it's been to that committee, the first time we reviewed it, we got the committee's comments, what they would be looking for, what, what we need to, what we need to evaluate to put requirements on, on this subdivision, and to basically make the, make the subdivision usable, but also keep safety in mind as parking was, was evaluated, and that will be an action item coming from this. We discussed the Missouri Department Conservation Community Assistance Program, or the CAP Program. This is going to be focused around our Ruby Dew Park. The Ruby Dew Park previously, roughly around twenty seventeen, was in this program, but this program went several years without being funded, and now they have funds, and the Conservation Department has came to the city of Wainsville and asked us to re-enroll that. They're looking for funding opportunities to assist, they're looking for the assistance in a community that provides outdoor recreation to a diverse community. And I, I think that's the definition of Wainsville. You've got a traffic ring running through a municipality that serves people that are from around this planet, not just the nation, and I think that's incredible. So that will also be a, an action item. Action items coming out of the Roads and Grounds Committee consist of the parking on Sierra Circle and Switchback, as well as the Missouri Department of Conservation CAP Roads and Grounds will meet June fourth at four o'clock. Emergency Services and Police Committee, Police Department update consisted of some grant updates and some, they were working with some grant opportunities and putting those together. Next meeting for that committee is June sixth at four o'clock. Finance and Human Resources, obviously discussed CID, which again is on pace. We had some discussion on how businesses within the CID pay that CID, and when they pay, and, and how the rules have changed, so we got a little bit into that. Again, coming out of utility into finance per the recommendation of the Utility Committee is the two thousand one back truck and the twenty fifteen back truck. That committee approved to forward those proposals to councils, so those would be action items found within, within your packet. And with that, a lending proposal from Security Bank was offered to that committee as well for, for the purchase of that back truck. Finally, we discussed the, and reviewed the bids for the city vehicles, the surplus vehicles that we have cycled through. Action items coming out of Finance and Human Resources, consider amending ordinance number twenty-four eighty-six, the Code of Ethics. Consider approving a lease purchase for a twenty fifteen back truck, and consider the sale of the two thousand one back truck. Next meeting for Human Resources, Finance and Human Resources is June sixth at five o'clock. Planning and zoning, met the fourteenth. They discussed and reviewed the preliminary plat of Pinnacle Place Phase Two. That plat, preliminary plat was approved by the committee, which then will need to be followed up obviously by a final plat and additional easements for utilities as needed. Next meeting for planning and zoning is June eleventh at five thirty at Wainsville City Hall. Special events just closing up here is the Wall that Hills, please go. It is, it's really, it's really a good experience, and right on the heels of that wall will be Kids to Park Day, June first, and that's always a popular event in Wainsville.
All right, thank you, John. Are there any questions from the council or the city administrator?
I do have ones right there. John, didn't we change the next emergency services meeting date?
We haven't as of yet. We are considering though, yes, we are considering moving that one week later to get a full committee there, and we are tracking that, and that formal announcement will come out prior to, you know, hosting the agenda, but we will, we, we were tracking moving that back one week exactly, same time.
And we'll move on to the next item. On the agenda is seven, it says the Blaskey County Republican Club, the monthly meeting. This is referring to a, a public post stating a petition, a potential petition from the citizens, based off of club members, or a club member, that mentioned a forensic review of the city's audit, audit of the city's budget, forensic review, and also some other information that was not quite truly stated. So I just want to ask the council tonight as a point of discussion, is what way, because I think it's our responsibility to ensure that the citizens know that we're doing things the right way. Of course, we have every financial audit, we are bound by statute to have those audits every year, which they, they range from anywhere from twenty thousand to twenty-eight thousand dollars for those audits, and every one of them has been posted back to twenty sixteen from twenty twenty-two's audit, it's already posted. Of course, we are working on twenty twenty-three. That information is provided online, but we have citizens that want to discredit the work that the city is doing here, which I think it does not keep in good, with good order and peace, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, and I don't think that, me personally, I responded to that post because it's my responsibility to ensure that the truth of what happens here is communicated to the public. I mean, I consider that one of my responsibilities, being a political head of this, of the city. So I'm asking the council, what do you think the courses of action should be? If there should be any, should it be ignored, what should, how should we respond? And when we have a citizen that puts out partial information as a way to manipulate others to follow suit with their accusations? And we're open to the difference between having a complaint, effective communication, and accusations are very different. Communication is about communicating back and forth. An accusation is leading with a motive. Just to give you an example, tonight we had an accusation that we were hiding things, when it was probably, it just didn't get put there, what the intent was not to hide. So when we have people that communicate accusations, it creates a lot of, you know, conflict, because that's not the way that you communicate, you ask questions for clarification, and then you just got to trust what's being said. But I just want to ask, what do you think your, what our response should be as a council? If there is any? Mr. Hyatt?
I, I personally didn't, I haven't heard what, exactly what happened, but I, I think unless they have any kind of factual data that they can bring, bring to us and show. Because I know, I know, I know we get audited, but we just went through an audit a week a couple months ago.
Right.
And everything went through CPA firm, I believe, and everything was pretty clean at that time. And I mean, we get to see the numbers in our finance committees and everything, and I don't, I don't understand where they're coming from. I'd like, I'd like for this person to provide some data that we could look at, at what they're talking about, that they're just making an accusation, I think that's what it was, just an accusation, so.
So to let you know, I did contact that, that club president, he did inform me that it was not a club thing, it was an individual thing, but I did offer, if they would invite me to, to come down- But I did offer, if they would invite me to come down and talk about it and address those issues, I would. And then I also offered to take them copies of the last two years' financial audits. And he said it wasn't necessary. And so did many of the club members, because they said they, they really are not on board with what was stated. But I did want to bring it to the council's attention, because you are out in the streets, and when people approach you, that, that particular post is on a page that gets a lot of views throughout this community. So you need to know what's going on if you're not connected on social media, but just to kind of communicate that, so that we can kind of look at how we want to move forward with these types of things, and should we just ignore them, should we respond? And that's what I'm asking for your input.
I don't think we can ignore it.
Mr. Farnum?
A lot of people are the misconception that when we have an audit, you're going to find that there's anything perjudiced going on.
Right.
That's not how audits work, right? Audits are an indication of the health of the business or the entity. Now, if you think you have a theft problem or some kind of shrinkage, then that's a totally different kind of audit against them.
Right.
And if they get their petition in, they're by enough signatures for the state auditor to come in, that's not free. The city taxpayers will have to pick up the tab for that. So I don't know if they're informed of that or not, but I think it's a mistake on their part, but, you know, to citizens, correct?
And I think that even with that price, it's about $70,000 or something along that line.
I can't answer that, I don't know.
That piece, but there is a price tag for that. But did you have something to say, Ms. Corr?
I was just going to say, I believe that we have the requirement on our shoulders to correct misinformation when we see it and hear it, and redirect them to come to a committee that's specifically about a committee. So come to Finance if you want to talk about financial audit. Come to City Council. But I, I don't think that we can ignore it, as that's when we see it starting to spiral. And we need to, again, our biggest thing that we have focused on in the last year has been transparency. And if we're not willing to make that adjustment and correct people in that moment, then that's us not being transparent.
Okay.
All right. I think the mayor did that tonight by getting it out there, you know, asking and saying it's a picture.
Any other comments?
I think if you invite him to in, to look at the audit or look at past audits and show them, so we're not hiding anything, but if he would like to review it and have questions, we have the experts here that can answer your questions. And then it's an open forum for him or her, whatever.
Okay. That's a good point. So-
Mayor, has this person ever talked to anybody from the council? I know, I'm not, I'm not positive who we're talking about, but, so if he has talked to council members?
Well, not about that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, so what I gathered tonight is all of the above. We address it, we continue to be transparent, of course, we maintain discipline, decorum, and respect in that communication. So that's what we'll continue to do, but I just want to make sure that we are on the same sheet of music, that we will address things. And being assertive and being combative are two different things. So I think we need to be assertive as a council. And that means that we should not back down from any false information, because that's our responsibility. And if I get fired for fulfilling my responsibility, then it's not meant for me. So I'm going to do my job, right, with ethical, with ethical standards, and treat everyone the same. If there's no further questions, we'll move forward to the next item. We have some items for consideration, ordinances for approval. We'll start with proposed ordinance HB 2024-13. First reading?
An ordinance prohibiting parking on certain portions of Sierra Circle and Switchback Road in Pinnacle Place, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance prohibiting parking on certain portions of Sierra Circle and Switchback Road in Pinnacle Place, fixing an effective date.
I entertain a motion.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Farnum. Second by Ms. Dills. Discussion. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
All right, we have proposed ordinance HB 2024-14. First reading, please.
An ordinance amending the Comprehensive Code of Ethics for elected officials, appointed officers, and employees of the city of Waynesville, Missouri, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Code of Ethics for elected officials, appointed officers, and employees of the city of Waynesville, Missouri, repealing conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Grant.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hayden. Discussion. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
Thank you.
All right, we have proposed ordinance HB 2024-15, approving lease purchase. First reading, please.
Authorizing the city of Waynesville, Missouri to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Security Bank of Pulaski County for the purchase of a 2015 back truck, fixing an effective date. Authorizing the city of Waynesville, Missouri to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Security Bank of Pulaski County for the purchase of a 2015 back truck, fixing an effective date.
Entertained a motion.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Farnum. Second by Mr. Rice. Discussion.
I just have one question, sir. Did, we got more than one bid on this?
See, we, we actually go out four bids. How many you get is depending-
Okay, I guess I asked the question wrong, but you answered it.
How many, yes, and so two-fold thing. We, we do bidding services, so we bid our banking services every roughly three to five years, okay? And that is basically securing your funds in a bank at said rate. And then we also go out for bids on lease purchases or, you know, property purchases, whatever that may be. And how many you receive is kind of up to how many people want to respond.
Right, I asked the question wrong, but yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Ryan?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
I abstain.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have proposed ordinance HB 2024-16. First reading?
Authorizing the city of Waynesville, Missouri to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation for the addition and maintenance of a public access and full use fishing area located on North Highway 17, fixing an effective date. Second reading, authorizing the city of Waynesville, Missouri to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation for the addition and maintenance of a public access and full use fishing area located on North Highway 17, fixing an effective date.
I entertain a motion.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Hyatt.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hayden.
Too excited.
Madam Clerk, call the row.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance HB 2024-17. First read, please.
An ordinance approving the sale of certain personal property to the city of Dixon, Missouri, fixing an effective date. Second reading, ordinance approving the sale of certain personal property to the city of Dixon, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, motion by Ms. Grant? It was seconded by Mr. Hicks? All right. Discussion. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other, any other business before we get into council comments that we need to address? I want to, I want to insert this in as other business. I want to bring up Mr. Daly to present him his, his appointment orders, and we'll take a picture while he's here and everybody's still.
I'm so glad we have you, Mark. Fully so. Yay.
You guys got a new logo there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's swaying. Well, who are we doing, right?
You can turn to her and then he can turn to me.
You're supposed to be in charge of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Did you want to say anything?
I feel like we've done a lot of talk tonight, so I'll keep it short. But I just appreciate the opportunity, sir. Retired from the military, I live here now with my kids, and just like all of you, give it back to who you live in the face of. Take care of that.
Thank you. All right, we'll go with council comments. We'll start with Mr. Farnum.
Well, this morning I couldn't make the Wall at Hills randomly, and I had an out-and-out demo appointment. And to make matters worse, I didn't get to go to visitation for a good local businessman that passed by, and I wanted to make sure I sent my condolences out to the Bailey's family. So that's a whole other thing.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Mr. Hicks?
So I got some, some praise from the police department from the folks. Thinking, they feel like there's been an uptick of patrols and presence, specifically more too, and it's, folks are really appreciative of that, so if you pass out, they appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Dills?
Yes, and I have confidence for the Roads and Grounds Committee. They were able to fix some sewer issues after it was reported by a citizen in the community, a contractor was stuffing stuff down the drains, and they, they took real big care of it, sucked it out, I guess, for the utilities department did.
Thank you.
Hyatt? Yes, I would like to congratulate Brandy Pfeifer and Kevin Daly again on their appointments to the park board. Glad to have you aboard. Thank you for volunteering. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Doyle and his staff again for giving the Wall at Hills to the Waynesville. Their bid only goes to one place in Missouri, so that's pretty neat. I think we've tried a few years. I've been to the real one, I thought it was great, drove by the one down there today, and it was a lot, quite depressed, so thank you again.
Mr. Hayden?
Two things. First, I had the opportunity to collect and better with Shadow of the Water Department for about six hours one day this, about three weeks ago, I guess it was. And I was so impressed with, I mean, I know it's their job, I get it, but they came out, they, they had to find a broken water line, and they followed it backwards, they ended up cutting the road up, and I was just, I was just so impressed with them. And in my walks around the city now, I see them all the time. They're putting in sewers, they're doing, I mean, these guys are everywhere, and I just want to make sure that they know it's noticed and appreciated. And that truck is really cool. It's, it's like a, it's like a, if you've ever seen it, it's like a shop vac with a motor and wheels. It's really cool. Second thing, though, is we need to try and make sure we're along the same lines as what the mayor said. We need to try and make sure that we're taking care of our city. I think, I think the city does so many good things that I just want to remind people, do the, do the right thing. And, you know, when you see, when you see litter, pick it up. When you, you know, when you're in the park and you see a kid's coat or whatever, pick it up and put it somewhere so that, so that the kid will find it. Just really take care of the, really take care of the town, because I'm really impressed with everything I see.
Thank you.
Like you said, lead by example, and I agree with that. I'd like to extend the, again, the congratulations to Brandy and Kevin, and really, Rubenox River Access, this is going to be a great thing for the community. Went down there and reviewed all that. People should start looking forward to this. This is going to be a good thing for, for everybody in the community.
All right, thank you, sir. That's great.
Kevin and Brandy, I'm on the park board as your city council person. Be ready to work, okay? Just, oh, that's my, that's my guidance. We can do amazing things for the city through the park, so excited to have you on board. Come out and see me at the wall. I'm volunteering for like eight hours on Saturday and Sunday, so I hope to see everybody come out and enjoy it, rain or shine. I was out of town. I did watch the opening ceremonies this morning, though, and loved it, absolutely loved it. I started crying, because Sean started crying, and I'm not usually an emotional person like that, so.
Who said I was crying?
No, he didn't. We could hear it.
It was raining.
I, I'm in Washington, DC all the time for work. I take hundreds of people to see the wall. And to have it here means like so much. I'm, I'm super excited to be able to, to work it this weekend and hopefully teach people something that they didn't know and help them find loved ones that maybe they weren't tracking or there. I remember me and a small child, I went to see it for the first time, and finding my loved one on the wall, so I'm excited to be able to help somebody do that. Thank you to the wonderful city staff. We have the best staff anywhere. And we, I don't think that we could possibly say or do enough to express that, but I want you to hear it. You are absolutely wonderful, and we couldn't do what we do up here without you all. And so, thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to share a few things. First off, I want to thank the Tiger TV crew that came. Hey, don't beat me up if I mention name up. Irene, is that right? Oh, maybe not. All right. So we got Abby, Colin, Bo, Kaylee?
Yes.
Yeah, they weigh connectus. Okay, let's give them a round of applause. I'd say this is the last, the last meeting before the summer, because graduation is tomorrow, and we know school is going to be out later on this month, so we won't see the, the students here, but we want to say thank you for all of the support for this entire year, for Mr. Wallace and his team. Thank you again for everything that you do for the cities within our region. The other thing I want to talk about is the Wall at Hills. Yes, get out there, go see it. I mean, it was, it was definitely a sight to see. We were already commended by the team that had Traveling Wall. They said this is the fastest that has ever been put up. And that just came because of the volunteers that we have from, from this community. That is a huge recognition, accomplishment, but it just speaks about the heart and soul of the people here in our community. I say this is one of the most giving communities I have ever lived in, and Pulaski County as a whole is definitely the standard that our nation should follow. I believe it's that, that important. Waynesville is one of 29 different locations that have been selected for the Wall at Hills. The Wall at Hills, since its conception, has, has been to over 700 sites. We are- We are number 10 in this trip. It started in Hawaii on Halo, then it went to Oahu, and then it made their way over to where we are today, and we've received much praise. I'm going to tell you, Trey and his team at the park, I mean, they do a, a great job in what they do out there. I mean, last night I was down there at 10 o'clock, Trey was out there. You know, they're, they're guys, they're at the park all the time. And I want to say, if you ever see our parks guys, make sure you go up and you say thank you, because they do a great job, and we get compliments all the time for how our park looks, and it says a lot about our community. And one thing that I always point people to is the Little Heroes Playground, because that speaks about the community, because the whole community built it with donations and time, so it's things along that lines that kind of communicate who we are. With that being said, I will say that I'm asking all citizens that when we come to the city council meeting, and we may have complaints, or we may have grievances, we do have order. And I think that if we're not willing as citizens to support the systems of the city and the order that we have established, then need not come, because you're asking us to hold a standard that you won't hold yourself. And I'm just speaking about what happened tonight with Mr. Brown that came here that would not pick up the mic, and that was not a hard request. And I just think that we have to understand that as, we're public officials, we're elected officials, we have a responsibility to respect others, but they also have a responsibility to respect us. So we're not doormats. And I'm going to tell you, this point forward, when people come here and they don't want to adhere to the, to the respect, the honor, the quorum of this court, this council, I will not hear them. They will be asked to leave if they refuse to leave. We have law enforcement here, and that's what I expect, that support, because we have been elected to do a specific job, and we need to be able to do it clearly, concisely, ethically, and responsibly. So I just want to share that this evening. And please, June 1st, Kids' Park Day, we plan on having a helicopter out there for the kids. It's all about the kids experiencing something new. We're going to have the fire department giving away bikes again. There's other organizations that are joining, giving away free food and things of that nature, but we want you to really come out and, there's something going on every weekend. K-State Cruises coming up. I mean, Old Settlers Day, just, just it keeps rolling, and it's because of the volunteers and those other organizations within the community that want to make a difference. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.